Good evening, calling the meeting for the Board of Selectmen, September 9th, 2025, to order in 6:31. First, order of business, I would like to have a motion made to add, looks like we have Sarah Connor here from Sustainable CT, uh, Deeper Water CT.
I want to make the motion added to the agenda.
Okay.
And wherever you want to slot her.
For a second motion?
Alright. Want to put her after Audience of Citizens?
6:31.
3A?
Should.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second, all favor?
On.
Okay, Secretary Report.
I went through old minutes and I noticed that we hadn't approved a lot because we had a lot of stuff for meetings in there, um, so I put them all on here, but if you haven't had a chance to look at all, you can table some.
I've got a couple one-year changes.
I'm going to log it up, I think tomorrow I can.
You had a few one-year changes.
Mine are, but I hope so.
Which one?
August 12th, April 15th, January number 9.
How many can I make?
January number 9, uh, they should contract 2. And then in the more recent, second one, we just, we mentioned, the store was not working. One, uh, different team in the vault. And then, um, the, uh, the minutes that were submitted for planning, and for joint meeting, we had a planning zoning that was on August 6th. It's, I think we missed a couple things. On item D, we were discussing the blank ordinance. There was a next step here for Board of Selectmen, um, to further discuss enforcement operations and the funds schedule. Let me give you those two. And then, um...
So I didn't, we did not take those minutes, those were...
I, yes, yes, but I...
So we can, I'll have to ask the town for probably, because they already approved those, if they're meeting, we'll put them in, but so maybe in ours, when I write up the minutes, I'll just say, "to be added to the joint minutes of, you know, the corrections or something like that."
Then it's item F, um, we have discussed, and it was an action I had before, um, the Board of Selectmen, EDC, um, to record the plan that needs to be purchased, about their shutdown order. And this was to be in outreach before it was announced.
Who was going to do the outreach? Is that the Board of Selectmen?
Okay. Uh, EDC, if we use the head of EDC, I don't know, we have a choice as to...
You know, actually, kind of, this is going to approach the election better, so that's good.
Okay. And, um, I think finally, the minutes from 7/22 was a first, second special meeting from the, not just the way we did it, it was...
Transfer station.
Yeah, special meeting, so just for our agenda, we can approve it, but it has a special meeting. And with those changes, I'm happy to make a motion that we accept the minutes, uh, as proposed here, 7/22, April, 7/14, 8/14, uh, 7/14 again, and 8/6, with the changes noted.
Okay, so one of these is a joint, is that...
7/22, yes.
As a special?
As a joint, uh, as meaning for the transfer station, Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Okay, and you'll give me all those notes?
Yes.
Seven, six, seven, eight, okay. So we have a motion to accept the Treasurer's or the Secretary's reports, all the different dates, with corrections, you made a second, all in favor?
On.
Awesome, okay. I don't know if we talked my way around it back to talk it over. Okay, Audience of Citizens, so we have our first one, and Publicity and Minutes, get your name for the record, and keep it, keep it clear. Would anyone like to address the board today? Thank you all for coming to find us. Um, okay, so then, we have added Sarah Connor, who's here from Deeper Water, Sustainable CT, Deeper Water, to address the...
Thank you. Um, I printed out, just, I did send this today, and I apologize for the last minute, a couple of things happened in the last week, one went up in early, and then I met the library Board of Trustees last night, and, um, we agreed that people be able to thank me to come and discuss this project with you all before we move on further. So, basically, for the last...
You did put this out, too?
Oh, you did put it in color, I was, I only printed it in black and white. Um, so the town, the Sustainable Deeper Water Committee, perhaps in context, has been collecting the classics, and we took a lot of it, and so we have earned benches to put in the community, so we can find a value, clearly want to put these benches. And so about two years ago, or year and a half ago, they were like, "let's..." We just installed this rain garden behind the library, and it's beautiful, and if you haven't been there, go take a look, because it's really in its full bloom right now. Um, but there's a space next to it, and you thought, "it might be great." There's a grass area right to the left of it, if you're looking at the rain garden. So the parking lot behind the library, if you go in, on the left, there's a new rain garden space, and then to the left of that, there's a grass area.
So it's closer to the road?
Straight, yes, so it's between the rain garden and the road, and then there are a few trees there. And so that might be great, to create a community seating area to accompany that garden, and provide space for people to sit and enjoy their book they may have taken out, or plantings, or just take a break. Um, so we approached the library last year, they thought it was a great idea, so it has taken us a while to get our ducks in a row, but, um, we have made a plan that the library likes. Uh, it approved last night, subject to you all approving as well, since it is on town property. Um, it would, you can see the rendering of it, that's my attempt at doing it via Photoshop, but, but basically, the area would be benches, um, we would have a hard scape surface, um, so that people, if they're in wheelchair, or they have, you know, accessibility issues, they would be able to enjoy this space as well. The center area would be, um, available, we would like to do a public art piece there, which would be another component of the project, and then, um, there would be native plantings around it to kind of buffer from, so when you're sitting in there, you're not just looking at the parking lot, you're looking at the trucks and terminals. So, we have all kind of agreed that that's a great plan, um, we have got bids for that, the project would cost, um, $10,650 is our estimate, that includes the installation of the plantings, the hard scape, securing benches, um, any, um, you're assigned to one thing, and then, um, we want to do a sort of small promotion to do fundraising, so we would need to do fundraising. Sustainable CT has a matching grant program, um, and they, I have spoken with them, they're on board with the project again, and we have all our proper approvals, and they match $50 per dollar, so we would only have to raise half of that, and then we would get the other half from Sustainable CT's community matching grant. So, the last piece beyond this meeting is I have submitted an application to Innen Wetlands because it is in the 100-foot buffer, public land zone, that's what it's called. Um, so they accepted the application last month, and then they're supposed to, to file a new acquisition. So I'm hoping to gain this evening is your support of the project. Your role in it would only be to allow us to build it on town property, but also, we would need a fiscal sponsor for the funds that we raise, which basically means the monies would be held by the town and dispersed to the contractor as they, uh, do the work. The fundraiser is done, is like a crowdsourcing, so Sustainable CT is very much, um, pushes or encourages communities to have lots of involvement, so there are, you need to have, you can't just have one person say, "Oh, I'll give you $10,000," you need to have, um, for this amount, you need to have 50, 50 donors to support the project. And the garden club has also been very involved, and so between the garden club and the library and Sustainable, we feel pretty confident that we can reach that goal, which is in the local 5,000 dollars to have it match, and we practice it ourselves. So.
I think it's a great idea, I think it's beautiful, as you proposed it, I think it would, the land is wonderful, why not have something like yours to serve that, um, it's beautiful having a planet to be sustainable and grow with the other work that's done. Um, I think for my colleagues, the only concern would be is administrating it once the money comes in, and then get it all before it stops.
I would say, I think it's a wonderful idea, um, I have a couple more follow-up questions on something else, but I think it's a great idea. But, you said that you can't really have a big donor, so is $1,000 a big donor, or is $500 a big donor?
So let me explain that, so we could have a big donor, but that wouldn't be matched, so we, there are much rules I should have planned out, but like, each group that's sponsoring the project, so Sustainable wanted to contribute something as a community or a library, they wanted to put in a little bit of garden club, you can only give a certain percent, let's say it's 15% of the amount raised, and then, if you have a large donor who gave, the cap that they'll match is, I think, 30%, 35% of what the contract is, so 35% of the $5,000, they'll match up to that for that one donor, and then after that, you can keep the money, you can use it, they just won't match it. So, and then they also, one of the rules is we do still, would still need to have 50 donors to have a crowdsourced, fully supported, uh, project, but, yeah, so that would be the only qualifier on the amount, to, because we can give as much as we want, but it wouldn't be matched, and we would still need to get those other donors.
Reason I'm asking is because we made a motion back in July for the cabinets, and we were, I'm not going to need that money.
From the friends?
From the friends and us. So if we took $1,000, and we approve here as Selectmen for the cabinets, it's still going to the library, that's why I was asking those questions.
You know, what's insane between as beautiful as that idea is, I think, because we all got to think of it, because it's such a great idea, and so...
We, we had approved something, and he extended it.
That's correct.
So, and that's why I'm saying, that's why I was asking those questions.
Yeah, well, I personally support it, I came to the last A-11, and it's in favor, I'm actually resident, but as Selectman, I think it sounds like we're all on board to support you. I think if we had additional monies, then maybe, as time goes on, it could expand, or something like that, or you could do another one over where the big signage is, or the seed garden, or the seed box.
Right, I think the, so at least from a Sustainable perspective, I think also from the library trustees' perspective, the kind of the vision is to have that happen, to have it be like an outdoor learning space where it's beautiful, it provides benefits to the environment, but also to the public for just visual appeal, a place to rest, a place to maybe even have a small outdoor class, and then, you know, to kind of continue, I know the garden club is the chain to continue to improve the grounds and, um, the coverage and whatever, but maybe that's one, if something's down the road, we can step in.
And I just have one more question, Sarah, is the pool still going on for the benches, or is that stopped?
So we have, we are not signed at four right now, um, we can, we're in a bit of a, I don't know if I signed this silly word, but, um, we have been so successful with that program, that we're kind of in a spot where we almost need to do, there's another way to approach the recycling, which is like a, it's called a grassroots, um, thing where we actually collect and bail that money for the plastic, but that would really be more of a regional effort, so we've paused the collect, the getting of benches, we can get more, and we certainly are collecting that plastic eventually, so I can, tomorrow's sign up for another challenge. They've changed the rules, it used to be that you could do, if you go to recycle 500 pounds and you get a bench, now it's 1,000 pounds, and you can only get one bench a year, so, um, so, but we could do that, we absolutely could do that, and we would, and we collect plastic.
The reason I'm asking is have we done anything with the benches over here?
The one by the bus station, I think.
If no, if no one's going to stand up and fix them, if there's a way for us to get the benches and put them out there, it'd be good for our residents, that's why I'm thinking.
The by the bus station.
Yes, yes, I looked into purchasing two that match, and then I've talked to the corporate guy, and he cannot do...
But again, that's why I asked Sarah to update that program, because that would be wonderful, it'd cost nothing, and we could get nice benches that would run a last for a long time, out on Main Street, that's what I was asking.
Absolutely. I will, when that's in place, and I, we're collecting, so you can start my...
Thank you.
Would you like a motion? So you're looking for us to support your project?
Yes, and also, so part of that is agreeing to be the fiscal sponsor, now, the way, so they've done this a lot of attempts, and, um, we work with Patrionicity, which is an organization that's partnered with Sustainable, so as far as the logistics of how those funds come to you, and I'm sure there's protection on that process, if needed, if there's a concern like that.
Well, we can figure out how to do that, I mean, we've done that with people donating for REITs, we did it when people donated when we had the dog seizure, seizure of dogs.
And I guess the only other thing I would need is just a, just a thing, is that we need the towns to get in, and so, if people contribute, they can count that as a donation of our tax structure.
I can talk to our finance person tomorrow, and then, kind of do the details, but right now, do you want to vote to support this?
I make a motion, maybe to support, um, because it's, you know, the fundraising, for this to be for additional seating in the garden area.
Okay. Okay, all favor? Well, thank you very much.
Sarah, I just have one question before you go on, honest. I noticed that there's still a sign up front in the survey, and I think that anybody who's building one, they would be doing...
Yes, Lynn's going to pull back, that was for, actually, for the Home Energy Solutions, yeah, 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 he's gonna, he's going to, yes. And I just decided that we were awarded a $7,200 grant for the Energy Solutions, um, community, uh, program, um, there are still some little pieces with when we'll be able to send a community letter out, um, but we did get the grant, and we're all very excited and working on, keep smart to get our work plan together, and, uh, give you enough to know.
Okay, so you had me write that letter quite a while ago, so can you be updated or something, just letting you know?
Oh, I'll update you, I have more information. Things have been a little chaotic this summer in the energy world, so...
Absolutely, I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much, so we'll be very excited to work on it.
Okay, so, discussion and possible vote to approve funding to complete the install of survey markers on this of driving in the vicinity of lots 6 and 6 feet. So, um, resident, we purchased lots, we ended up procuring single for lots 6 and 6 feet, had sent us both something, um, he sent all this up, and that, so I don't know, if you guys have thought you can do that, and want to discuss it tonight?
First, if this follows up from the meeting, one of these minutes that we looked at, was our takeaway, as I recall, coming in that meeting, was that, um, we wanted to check what the amount of the foot stall, the rods, if they were done by, or done as survey work?
Right, so I did call Don Engineer, um, he is on vacation until next week, I did review this, I'm just, with this sort of thing.
I think this new one gives the price, does it not?
Yes, so it's not...
$2,000.
And it looks like they're now looking to put in five points, two look like they're at the intersection with the right of way, um, but, this other line is not on this, like, that's property line, so the ones on is like the P B's three, that one at the top, I guess is, is commercial, I forgot, okay. But again, I didn't, I wanted to have a little more clarification about this, and so I reached out, and, uh, I don't know what you guys think, did you have a chance to?
I think that we should move forward, once you are satisfied with this bandwidth of price, um, I think we discussed it the last meeting, everything around $4,000, with the deed that does that, I think we should move forward, and have the last...
Well, where do you get the $4,000? What, what he quoted us is $2,000.
Uh, I believe the two attachments to the motion we sent, the letter, um, talked about what was already spent for surveying, like, whether, so that can be done.
Well, the person that bought the properties, uh, which was Olson, um, property holding, I believe?
Yep.
He had it surveyed, but we're not looking to pay him back for the survey, because that was, the properties were sold as is.
I think there's some payment that you're keeping this covered, as I understand, and yes, it was sold as is, as we discussed at the last meeting, you went ahead, you were charged for putting in those states, and you're sitting there, or you, so the only piece left would go to do, that we want to forward is the deposit, so my understanding is that, we're looking for compensation back to, with her, um, let's see, to cover the cost of what, to put those states in, and the approval, and then, approval on compensation to be forward for putting in the lots, I don't know.
Okay, that is not my understanding at all, I mean, I, I don't want to concur with that, because I am looking at two different bills you submitted, one, and they both have the exact same description of services, um, town, it says Town Hall Research, Field Reconnaissance, Field Survey, Stakeout at Block, 1711, to Mr. Olson, and then, 2015, which I assume is what the town was being asked, because then in this, even on this, the intent wants to be recovered or set, additional services will not exceed 2,000. So I guess then I'm confused on what we're getting asked to, because you're thinking at $4,000, I'm thinking $2,000.
And that's what I had asked, we read the minutes here, that's what I specifically asked, that I want a breakdown, and I have not seen a breakdown, and I was told prior to our meeting, I said at that meeting, special meeting, that I heard a $1,000, now I wonder, because map here says not to exceed $2,000, so I want a $1,000 already there, and that's why I specifically asked, the day of that meeting, downstairs, I need more documentation to make a vote on this, because right now, my vote is not, because I do not have enough documentation to, because we're talking $5,700, we're talking 2015, I'm talking the whole price of everything, it's 2015, another $2,000 not to exceed, so that's, that's $4,015, and then $1,700, so that's $5,700.
I think the 2,000 and the 2,015 are the same, it's one of the same, but this isn't crystal clear.
It doesn't seem, because the bill here, the bill here and here is for $2,015, then if you look at the map here, it's in the red, it says not to exceed $2,000, but we've already exceeded $2,000, if you're saying they're the same thing.
So I think we probably need to have a full form with the provider?
Okay, hold on a minute.
And the full certification.
But then, I keep going back to what I mean, that they specifically asked, I want a breakdown of exactly what we're talking about, exactly what we're looking for, and what he's looking for.
Which I think is what he was trying to provide, but again, it's, it just added a little more...
I read that 1711 is goes back, again, from 2015, goes to the lot, but we need more clarification, let's step that sort of fiscal clear.
Again, I was specifically told that it was going to be a $1,000 for the rods, and that's where I've been questioning.
But it looks like it's 2,015.
Okay, they want $1,000 from this person.
But again, that isn't one of the descriptions here, the exact same description is here, he just made a different invoice and put another, he put my name on it, maybe not all you have any information, it's the same.
So I think we should, we need to have more documentation, but it's, well, it's providing card, this is the work, I'm just repeating myself in my understanding, this is the work for the surveying of states.
Well, obviously, they can't, all three of us have a different take on it.
So I guess, my question is, so your assumption is that the total cost is $3,700?
37 and...
Some change. And my assumption is it's 57.
And I'm looking at that, he wants 2,000.
No, Don wants.
Yeah, I, I don't think...
So that's, so I'm fine, and if you need us on a call with Sarah, I can do it.
Really, wait, 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 actually?
That's what he said, and then I called yesterday.
I'll make a motion to tables, and so, the next one.
Okay.
My second? Look, we have to vote, table.
All right, ordinance discussion, number five, Park and Rec and others, so, uh, the town attorney has the property maintenance ordinance to review, the, um, transfer station ordinance to review, the short-term rental ordinance to review, Planning and Zoning already had their, um, fee restructuring, or whatever they were doing to theirs, which was simple, um, they had their town, their planning and zoning attorney look at that, and also the sidewalks, so those two are all set, um, so we want to move forward, the other ones, we have talked about a town meeting or something coming up, um, but we do have somebody from Park and Rec online, they wanted to talk about, or what they submitted for the changes to the park and rec ordinance, I don't know if you all had a chance to?
Do you have two little questions? I'm not sure if I can clarify that, leave on passing you, um, the blind, the short-term rentals, sidewalk, and transportation?
Our town attorney has them now.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see, and wants to come back and see that, and then we'll, so it's, it's in file before we tell, all right?
But the sidewalk fees?
Sidewalk and the planning and zoning changes to their ordinance are all set for their planning and zoning attorney?
So those are ready to go to a town meeting?
Yes.
Um, and Planning and Zoning is going to be really working on those, I guess?
We are going to kind of still come back to that, because remember, there was some discussion about leaving the decibels out of it, and also having different zones for different parts of the town, um, so there were, there were a lot of tweaks that were started moving to that.
And Planning and Zoning take the lead, so?
I think they're going to take the lead, and then, we'll probably do this, if that was the board's offering several times, I would imagine, so we'll come up with something. So I have Planning, uh, Park and Rec on, on line here, do you want to add? Do you want to add anything for our discussion and go outside?
Uh, no, I think the plan is just for us to, uh, fire, or, uh, or, and I feel like this language that is all special. And these current sticker language, and as far as the program, I think that figures need to be revised. And if July, nineteen eighty-three is correct, all, all the different ones, they should, they should, I think it's up to current dollars. But that, that's really, uh, just mostly very attention to that, with these, uh, not updated. Right on the line, if, uh, she stated also, maybe updated, uh, sure, I think those are all good.
I had a little question where you got those numbers, so you put them through, uh, first you have to...
Just, I didn't really, yes, it was, uh, it was amazing, I'm not really, and I think I did round down. Uh, I just also, I just spent a comparison fee, this thirty dollars, I'm, I, and he is, so I'm, uh, I'm a small fly, that's a good, uh, calculation. There is forty five dollars that he charged, it was my, the, the, so I bought seven files of the light, and then just made a, kind of, this, uh, three dollars.
Okay, so one of my comments was, basically, no vehicle shall be parked in the parking area of the town land, being or plowed, uh, without the sticker. But actually, we sell day passes, so, so that would have to be kind of just reworked a little bit. Because if somebody has a day pass, they're not going to have a sticker. Yeah, yeah. And then we had talked to town clerk about maybe not being so specific in our ordinances, in regard to the exact sticker placement and all that, because she's thinking maybe some day we won't have stickers. I don't know if that's something we want to think about, but generally speaking, in these ordinances, we were thinking to keep it, generally speaking, you know, because the more specific we are, then the more it gets outdated quickly, and you have to make changes. But otherwise, I, I appreciated all of the changes to what you've done here. What do you think, Sofm, feedback? Okay, so do you, I can send you my, my comments, and if you want to rewrite it, Tony, and then send it again, and we'll send it over to Legal. That's usually our steps, and then kind of get the word out to the public, and then we have to go to a town meeting to have this changed. Awesome, well, thank you so much. Okay, good night. Awesome, okay.
I'm sure the section's on all these.
Oh, he's still on?
It's section three, just like that. It said boat stop and shut, you live in two hours in any twenty-four hour period, except for structural permission, so. So probably my boat down there, I get structural permission from the harbor master or the building, to stay there longer?
Yes. And that's usually how it's been, I mean, as much as long as I can remember.
It's not very long, two hours.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you know, you, you put your boat and you drive up to the Olson house, and you have lunch, and you come back, there's two hours. And it seems like a very short period of time. And what happens if, you know, I'm coming back, and I, I stop at mother thirty-seven there, it just seems like a short period of time. I'm not a boat owner.
Well, that's only putting it at the dock, like, if you're out there mooring or something.
Putting it still at dock.
They were just trying to prevent people from docking overnight, that sort of thing.
Or, I understand, a two, a two-hour period, this is very short.
Think we should up it to like four hours, or?
But could you say you're docking overnight as well? You know, that's what we're trying to do.
So? Well, I, again, talking to harbor master years ago, it was just to try to prevent people from using that as just an all-day dock, or something like that.
I understand, but again, so if I pull my...
But I'm not a boater, so if you think it makes more sense to have a longer...
Here we are.
If I launch my boat, I can, you know, down to Sabre, and come back, and then it's three hours, four hours. And I don't have a bite to eat, I'm back. So according to this, you're over two hours.
Can you give us a couple of...
Yeah, but if you, well, I'm not following you, so if you launch your boat...
But you're talking about two different things, essentially. You're talking about boat, you're talking about parking your car.
Yeah, no, we're talking about boating, pull up your boat to the pier, the dock down.
That's just, just pull up to dock, that's it? No, I'm talking about me launching my vehicle?
No, 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 you launch, and then you park your car, you can be parked all day if you're a town resident. I mean, there's no limit to parking. It's pulling up to your, your boat up to that dock that you have down there, and then just leaving for the day, and like, leaving it.
So basically, people were plugging in, right? You wanted to unload, load...
You pull up, unload, if you want to pull for a while, and then like, they'll have a little picnic in our gazebo or something, that's allowed. We were just trying to prevent people, because there were a couple of boats that were parked down there, and then they'd plug into the gazebo for hours to recharge, or whatever they were doing down town. So we just were trying to like, put down on electric bills, that kind of thing. Again, that was ages-old discussion, so maybe...
I'm approaching my understanding.
Does that make sense, or should it be longer?
Not too long.
All right. Tony, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, I mean, I mean, uh, other, I mean, I'm, it's a process, it's a process, it's a process.
Just leaving your boat at our, that like, long pier.
And that's what my misunderstanding, I, I read it as, I launch my boat, I leave my truck and car, my truck and trailer there, and I launch my boat. That's how I, that's how I get it, so I'm sorry.
Well, Tony thought the same thing, and maybe, so, that language has to be readjusted, yeah. Yes. Absolutely.
I, could we, I have a couple of papers to take a look at, just read and see if it makes sense.
Yeah. Maybe our two harbor masters can look at it.
Put a cleaner, cleaner language.
Yeah. That's it, yeah, really good.
I don't feel bad now, Tony. I thought seventy was good, so.
It shows you reading the details.
Exactly, right.
Overstand here.
Yeah, no, that, that was, but, because that means other people are reading that, right? Okay, our region four school, so I want to leave this on here just to give an update, if you had anything, but... So I went up to the first board of ed meeting after the region board, and one of the, the principal of John Luthrow said, they had sent out a note to the parents, asking people to put their children on the buses, because of the different, the security project is shutting off that, that little top loop, or that first loop we come to for traffic. That was always where the children were dropped off. So she said, it's been great, there hasn't been any traffic jams, and she thinks quite a few families are heeding that advice, so... And the police have said it's been fine for traffic, so, so good job with that. And then I think that the elevator was the issue, kind of holding up that project for moving forward, or getting completed on time, because there was a holdup in getting that part or something. And that was all I wanted to offer about John Luthrow. I did speak to, at the, at the meeting about the lights at the valley, they seem to still be a problem. And they were working on like, a new timer, I guess they just got a new timer, that was going to be able to be set, so the lights were shut off and turned on all automatically on a timer. So that'll be helpful. We've got some residents in the neighborhood who've been popping their lights. Anything with the boat, of them?
No, I believe we're going to have a meeting later this month, we're still, and close off dates. At the last meeting we did have, they submitted for reimbursement, the statement, I believe we got forty-seven percent of the project back. Reimbursement, forty-seven. So it takes that five million dollars down, forty-seven percent.
Excellent.
Is that what you're anticipating?
I know it's, it's very, but, and there's some, so some things that we put into it to try to be reimbursed. And if we don't get it, then we have to shuffle some, some things around, but, uh, we put them all in, see if we'll get one back.
Awesome.
A lot, a lot that had to do with the, the instruments, cleaning up the instruments, and buying new instruments. But there will be a surplus at the end. I don't, I'm not going to give a figure yet, because it's still going to be numbers, but it did come in under budget. Under budget on the, on usually part of contingency money. We have four hundred thousand dollars of contingency money, and we use some for some extra things that haven't been done, that we put all over the way.
So as Catherine asked, forty-seven percent, is that what you guys were hoping for?
Yes.
So you weren't shooting for a higher level of commitment, okay? That's, that's a nice percentage.
That's very good.
And then I know, uh, the facilities director, I presented quite a few projects he had done up there. They got the stage re-done at Valley, which is really kind of a hole, and I don't know how they keep winning all their great awards up there for the musicals, if the kids were jumping around a hole on the banks of Beachwood. So, uh, it just shows what, the talented people we have up there. Anyway, there are a lot of other little things that we, we've put, like, dreads on stairs, and it's, um, a big job. Okay, so that was the region four school. Our town hall building issues. So again, I tried to read in the newsletter what happened, as best as I could, from what the service master and the HVAC people had told me. So, uh, right now, we're still in a state of flux, working hard downstairs, they're redoing the assessor's office, it's down, ripped down to the studs at this point. The subfloor is very interesting to see, in an old building, there's quite an inches of floor, but it's now done up. So the assessor's office is now in a small conference room on a temporary basis. So we are seeing the public coming in, and keeping the doors locked, but any transactions the public needs to make, they're still welcome to knock on the window, or at the door. The windows are open, it's beautiful weather we're having, so people are sticking their heads in and saying hello.
And our insurance claim is in, and how's it looking for coverage?
Well, there's a dialogue with the insurance. Right now, we don't really have any vendor bills yet, so we have to wait, but the insurance, we anticipate covering most of it. They have actually been heard twice, I think, and they emailed our building inspector. Who basically stated that right now, we were anticipating a dollar value of, I think he put, you know, eighty thousand dollars here up or something for... And hopefully, that's worst-case scenario, who knows, that the range, you know, maybe two hundred thousand. But again, so, keep, keep it posted, but it's getting there.
I guess my question was, when it happens, you know, try to find a new cost, you know, why, why this happened, hopefully, uh, maybe it was a malfunction of a car, but if it was something else, we'll run this back again. In fact, the conversation really did about that.
No, I think it was, it was a malfunction in the HVAC.
Yeah.
And that, specifically what, and what cost it.
Exactly.
So who was interested at this point, to figure out what it is? Is it the HVAC, my Apache?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the HVAC people, I think we're going to replace that whole unit that was, uh, what happened with the very hot water that was in the pipe, and they're, uh, tubing invented.
Hot water should be in the HVAC system.
So we'll get it in port sometime in the next several weeks.
We're hoping, yeah.
Great.
Okay, finance discussion for the payloader, and we have to set a town meeting. So basically, what we wanted to do is talk to finance, board of finance, Bud Echmeroff, the chair, is looking into different finance options for getting the payloader financed. What we think we're going to do is ask the town at our next, well, what I, I know we're going to do, we're going to come to a town meeting, ask the residents to approve us borrowing from our general fund to pay for the payloader, because the payloader is, you know, I, I'm exaggerating, essentially duct taped together, and it's about to break down any day. It's leaking oil, so it's an environmental issue, and it's causing now a lot of maintenance bills, which are, it's silly, throwing good money into a, a bad situation. So we're going to set up a town meeting. At the town meeting, I'm anticipating the agenda will be to ask the residents to approve us borrowing from the general fund. Once the financing is in place, we can pay ourselves back. We've gotten permission to do this from the town attorney, our finance attorney, and that's totally fine, a lot of towns do that. But again, we'll be asking the residents to approve it. And then I believe the other thing on the agenda would be to approve our park and rec, I mean, our planning and zoning alternate, which is sale of mapbooky?
Yep.
Right, that has to go to town meeting, and then I don't know if we will have any of the ordinances back at that point, without, because we really do still need to be... Educate the public on those, because I think if people just show up, they might vote, vote down.
It'd be great to have a public information session, uh, before the board of directors, yeah. Did you want to pick a date for the...
I do, I threw out maybe in March, just looking the twenty-fourth or the twenty-ninth, or something.
September?
Or are we already in October? Yeah. Maybe you think that's too soon, maybe do early October.
Both of those things are fine. The only thing is, um, do you have any warrant, get approved, right on the front?
Already pushed it?
Wait, do we prove it up to the amount?
Twenty, probably, probably.
It takes up to three hundred?
Well, we, they have approved it last.
Yeah, the board of... So what we wanted to do is, which the town, to give the amount and the transfer, and what's it to the other to the town. Um, when, so, I have a date in mind.
Okay, for the twenty-fourth or the twenty-ninth?
I just, one is like a Wednesday, almost like Monday. So I don't know what people think, so a Wednesday.
You want, oh, so...
Yeah, and then Monday, the twenty-ninth, is the last Monday, so I don't think there's any town, or other meetings, commission meetings. All right, so what do you think, the twenty-fourth, we should do it?
Should.
Do it earlier, or?
Hold on. Down the road?
It's fine with it.
Okay.
What time do you think it came?
About six thirty.
Have you heard some, Eric, or Sue, what they were, what they were purchasing? Did you, have you heard those specifics yet?
Yes, he's gotten free quotes, and he's, and married, gone to what he needs, you know.
And what size is he looking for?
We're not the size right now, I mean, it's on a piece of paper that I have downstairs, but I don't know.
The reason I'm asking, uh, is, a couple of people have spoken about the size of it, and what we need, and want to make sure we don't get one too large, and make sure we get one that fits our current equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So that's why I'm asking about the size, if we get a larger one, everything around it, including tag, price, everything, or whatever, is more expensive. So, um, before we get to the town meeting, I, you know, that's about the money, and what we're going to do after, but I would like to recognize. And it'd be great to do some air on that, but I'd love to hear from you.
I believe it's the same size, it's what we currently have, just a different, uh, make, with a bobble right now, I believe he was looking at a giant.
Oh, we can't go wrong with a giant gear.
I, I concur with that, as much as I know from Eric, it was basically replacing where it has, I don't think he was going bigger or anything, because...
If anything, it's a tad bigger because of how each manufacturer has rates their size, so it's not, it's not a big payload.
Yeah, that's what, I'd love to send some emails to him, it'd be great, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you. They'll be excited to get that and solve that problem. You've kind of been a far off topic for quite a while.
Uh, deep water day, I just wanted to remind everybody, it's September twentieth. We need volunteers, Park and Rec is doing a great job, they've got a lot of merchants on board, they've got a lot of clubs and commissions that are going to be out front, and local groups. I think they're going to have activities here, down, I believe, the church has something going on in the church green, farmer's market, of course, going on. Historical society will have something. Garden Club will be doing their hoops and bake sale, or...
Friends have the friends.
Friends, excuse me.
Fire department barbecue.
Fire, fire department's having a barbecue, I think you've missed the deadline, you want to order the food, yeah, but yeah, they're having barbecue food, uh, lunch.
Like, pre-orders, pre-date, pre-order?
Yeah. Park and Rec's doing the five K in the morning, Fireworks at night. And I did make a little note, just to thank the sponsors of the Fireworks, Haynes, Wayon, GDL, Generators, Howard Tree, and Top Match Electric. They're going to all chip in to get them paid for completely, so that was awesome, and Haynes and them is allowing us to shoot them off from the back wall, so that was great, that quarter.
Haynes, Wayon, Top Match, Howard Tree, sort of, some of them?
Oh, GDL.
Thank you.
So if anybody watches this and wants to help, please reach out to Kaylee over at Park and Rec, I'm sure she'll can give you a job. Also, that day, I think the Nest is having their auction of their items, which is unfortunate that they went out. Oh, Jimmy Delano reached out, and Riverview Lodge is having, residents are having an art show that day. So there are other things going on in town, which is great, so not only downtown, but, you know, outskirts. All right, second audience, citizens. Do you have other people joining us?
Jeremy Chase, uh, West Street. You're talking about the light ordinances and the communication with the public. I, I definitely feel like messaging there is important, and that's really all I have to say, it's like, I feel like we should spend some effort... I, I definitely feel like messaging matters important, and that's really all I have to say, is like I feel like we should spend some effort in figuring out how to more impact that to people, otherwise people will just stare at that.
Do you have any suggestions? What, or you can get the word out?
What the fire department did with, with the board of finance worked quite well. There were a couple sessions that had information that seemed tactile, people were coming in, get information, that's the first complaint I made, because that was successful.
Really, talked about that as the slide, kind of an educational, just coming, learn about what it is, so thank you.
Yeah, all of them, all of them, or the changes.
I mean, it's been years since they've been updated, so if we take another six weeks and really talk with the public, it'll just make them stronger.
Anyone online? All right, selections report, so I kinda went through, I know we haven't met in a while, and I just wanted to point out some of the, so, uh, we did close yesterday on the town owned property that was sold. This looked dry, and I believe the second lot was sixty, is that correct? In my back, so the more recent one we just sold, we closed on that for a hundred and two thousand. The new oil shed is getting put in at the transfer station, the pad was poured yesterday, and so they're gonna take delivery on that in the next few days. So that'll be great, that was with, some money that was in the capital, but also with some of the ARCA funds that was getting that done. Housing brand, shout out to Daniel Smith, who worked with me, and we've got this great housing brand for thirty thousand dollars, the check arrived today to the town. And we're gonna be working with Gorman and New York and also the housing authority, Joanna Horton.
To move on.
Well, we're gonna start looking, Gorman and New York has a lot of experience and sophisticated data, already, but they've done, but looking at town and save owned property to see maybe potentially where we could identify some of the spaces where they can put some housing. So that'll be ongoing. We have speed bumps going in on Village Street to help, to help the traffic, or the speeding situation on that road. So letters went out to all the residents and the feedback so far is positive, they won't, they are gonna be maybe installed by the end of this week.
What type of road speed bump?
Teflis speed bumps, they'll be pulled up in the winter, and if, uh, they don't work out, then we're gonna pull them up. So it's just something that we're gonna try.
Carolyn, Village Street, this is gonna affect your coverage on, please talk about the parking, you've been jammed up core, is there anything underway to do on that?
Well, so I was working with the state, the resident trooper for the last couple of years here, and we did put out, there's no parking spots in already along. Um, I think the thought is on the, let's see, the south side of Village Street, it's the closest to deep water, it's at it, right there. To extend that no parking zone farther down, because people are parking right beyond it, up on the sidewalk, so I think we're gonna go down farther. I'm talking with the resident trooper, we were trying to come up with, if, if it's, it should be a fire zone or a loading zone or something to keep people from parking there.
I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to have a field loading zone because I'm loading my pizza in my car, it comes over.
Well.
I mean, there's.
Right.
Because again, it's a very tough area when you put the, they put the, but the beach tree there last year, year and a half ago.
So we tried to address the parking, but it solved a few issues, but not everything, because people always were parking there. But the problem is to get into the back of that building, it's very narrow, so the big trucks do pull up right there to unload. We don't wanna hurt our merchants anymore than we have, you know, that we have to, whatever. That's why the loading zone with the fifteen minutes or something was thought, but then if people are picking up their pizza, they're gonna say, well, I'm loading, it'll be only for fifteen minutes. So we haven't quite figured out exactly how to get that.
And just stick along with it, it could be, they do use it with the commercial truck unloading the fifteen minute, it all individually, you can park it like a parking lot, just walk across the street there. There's so much parking there.
Not a bad idea, so it could be truck unloading only, but again, talking to the police and trying to come up with the language that'll work on a small sign. And, you know, you can't put too many words on a sign, people do not read it.
But the trucks are a bigger problem than anything, because a big truck's in, I pull up in my car, I can't see past.
You can't see that.
Do we think we have enough public to put on at this point, or is it, are we following an accession of the, the public?
Uh, well, I think, I engage a lot of people from Village Street, so I think at this point, we know that there's an issue, and we're trying to figure out. Um, that beach tree is beautiful, but it really limits, like you can't push it back or anything like that, you're kind of stuck on both sides of that road. Um, I've reached out to the DOT to see if they could take away the parking spots on the main street. I don't think we lost our.
We paid our bill.
They, they're the ones that put the parking spots in, I did before, and so I asked if they could take away the corner spots.
One fifty-six.
Because you can't allow it to. All right, let's see, um, very excited, shout out, we got reinstituted or reinstated for that five hundred thousand, half million dollar grant to cap the old landfill. I've been working with Jacobson and the state back and forth, and they decided to let us keep the money.
Fabulous news, fabulous news. The only problem is it's not a four million, so what can we do now to start thinking about, where are we gonna do it, how do we pay for it?
Well, we've reached that, I, I'm continuing conversations with the state to see if there's more grant money. Um, our first step is to have to be, we have to resurvey the landfill area, kind of get the new footprint of where we need to cap. And then figure out the amount of capping material, new monitoring laws that have to go in and host these.
Is there some question about the parking laws that also that need clarification with the survey?
So yeah, that was really good news, I don't know that, at least we have, we're halfway there. Contracts and notice to proceed were signed today for running Brook Park, so you can get started on the platwood restroom and concession stand, concession building, which are all part of the grant. That was the Urban X grant that we got years ago, so that's exciting. And I have the fireworks here and that was my little note, so I think, no, do Riverdale, yeah. So I should remind everybody, because I think our next meeting is after deep water day.
So holding on a couple of these additional, we, we, we're going to have historical signs that I know that went off to the fall, we're just about there. Is that gonna start this year, do you know?
Uh, I reached out to Jerry Roberts and I haven't gotten follow-up from him, but I did ask him maybe to come to the, uh, uh, what's, what meeting, kind of update us on what's going on, so I can reach out to him again.
Something we asked him, I didn't know, on the, the work on class two, there was a water company did the work, and we got money for, you know, for paving. That was a question, I just don't know their experience and what they do with it.
Uh, typically they don't, now for about a year and they'll let it settle. So I believe next, maybe next fall or maybe spring, they'll be paving, or that's what, put that out.
Did you get the money up, we haven't, we got the money?
The water should come out.
They're, they're gonna pay to have it paved or something, there was an agreement there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right, correct, but I'm paying, usually I kind of put all that stuff in as part of their whole contract.
So no money's changing, they're just, they're gonna take, one of the residents, I think, I think they're only a thousand dollars to pay.
Yeah, they were gonna sort of credit the town back or something, there was an agreement there because, um, we wanted to then do all the roads instead of just, you know.
In that case, yes, if they said, no, we're gonna give you a hundred thousand dollars instead of us just patching, we're gonna do the whole road.
So Eric can find out, so you're thinking all the work will be done next, this time next year or?
Well, I asked how long we have to drive through that uneven, and they said, oh, yeah, let it settle, so typically you give it a year, give it a couple of seasons to settle, so, so maybe next spring.
I know the president's hard candy, but here's what it is. Um, I looked this message.
They got new water mains.
Awesome. A, a message which I didn't read, the religious community for, from the spiritual people on the, telling the singers. Are we moving forward with that, or is it, is it, hold up on that for the contracts?
Uh, I didn't have a chance to read that, I saw it come through, and it just said they had talked to all the finance, and that was all I saw, so. She had a lot of, uh, she reviewed all the contracts, and there were a couple red flags, as you know, that she pointed out. So I don't know if those got resolved, I didn't read the rest of the email.
So maybe we can do that, because I think it's to offer help for September, for September, which we're.
Right, and I, I don't, I wanna move forward with it if the town, if we think it's a good deal for the town. You know, some of the terms were a little different, and our finance person had reviewed them and had some concerns, so I don't wanna sign any contracts.
Three of us think it's a good deal, but not someone that's more.
Don't believe in selling that this week, if they're asking you to use on Thursday, if you can move forward on it, if it's appropriate.
Well, right, I don't wanna get kind of related to something that's not a good deal for the town, I mean, they did a lot of research to find out, but, but, you know, again, they, they, they looked at a contract that worked for the town for the last several years, we can get a better rate, but yet the terms of the contract or what the services in that contract, maybe we don't need anymore, or we need better services. So maybe we don't wanna just sign a continuation of what we already had without tweaking some of the services. And that was the concern our finance had, and I thought it was very legitimate, so again, I'm not gonna sign anything till I feel we know what we're getting, and we're getting a good deal for the town. But I know we're all in agreement that we wanna save money, so.
So we'll have a meeting later this week, and just put those issues to rest and move it forward. I might, I just had another question of cutting, of HR, um, I think we got a draft of that HR handbook from our consultant somewhere, if you know, something like that, I've given it an opportunity to input on, or to do it anyway, what do you need from us on that, if anything?
Um, I can certainly circulate that, we, um, HR would like to set up a meeting with that, but right now she's been working, uh, doing our other tasks that we asked her at the library. So that kind of got a little backburner. I believe what's gonna happen is we'll go with the handbook, whatever changes we wanna make, but then we could still have to go to the union rep to look at, to give to the union members to get voted to, yeah. So I don't think we're in a rush to have it done, because the union still would have to approve it before our employees.
Are we gonna, is she on, on contract to do the job descriptions, I saw there was that kind of a burden?
No, there was no, there didn't do job descriptions, that was gonna be, I mean, under the two contracts we had with her, one was handbook, one was the library. If she was gonna help there with the personnel and that kind of stuff. So I think if we wanted to do job descriptions, that would be something separate.
It was on a parking lot with that one, so.
I would be.
You see, that was starting with the first consultant. No, after the first consultant, remember with the board of finances, that parking lot, that's the issue.
Yeah, so go back to it, but I think we agreed that it would just be for a handbook. And then to see how we, we liked the HR consultant services to, we had never worked with that person, so.
But when we last, you know, we talked about putting up, um, signs in our public spaces, about Memorial, you know, or like, um, you then, a discussion evolved to updating the voiding ordinance. Are we moving forward with signs for now in our public spaces, or is that table we definitely?
Um, that's a hard question to answer, because are we moving forward, you know, to, I, I think at this point, I really don't like signs, like, like it bothers me to have to put a sign in, but that's what I'm agreeing to say. The park closes at dusk or something, just because I think it's so beautiful, but I need to have to. Again, I was working with our resident trooper, who is now on, so, you know, a little changing the cards there, I will bring it up with my new resident trooper, to see. I've done a lot of research and it's very hard to legally, I guess, to really enforce those voiding without going against somebody's right, rights to actually enjoy the public space, sit on a bench, whatever.
So we can be part of the whole ordinance package.
Right, I don't know if we can do that right now, as far as the ordinance packaging, it might be a little rushed, but there are definitely words we can add to ours, I mean, we already have a voiding ordinance, which is good, so it would just be kind of tweaking it to what, like you had shared, what Westbrook had done, so maybe use some of that language. But I don't know about the general signage, and I'd like to put that in all public spaces, so.
Well, let's see what the trooper says, because the thought had been, they couldn't do anything unless it was posted somewhere. So if, if it updated thinking on that, and if it's, can be effective, I don't think we're doing it, if we find out that it is completely effective in terms of state laws, then it makes no sense to do it, so a little more information. They're at the middle stages, and we're just trying to solve the other problem.
Well, keep in mind that, that our resident trooper, who is now reassigned, um, other police that I spoke to did not share the same view about the enforcement of that.
So let's see, we can update it, we have to get.
So I think maybe our new trooper will have, yeah, had a little different take on that, but.
I think that we should, three of us should have a little, sit down with the trooper also, just so we can, we can.
Yeah.
Share our ideas.
So it might be something that we, we can tweak a little bit, and then it can be enforced, you know, and maybe there was just an unwillingness to enforce some of the things too.
So I'm gonna, I'm taking the crowd and say, I definitely want us to look at that, have that discussion, have an end timeline, so we know, a month from now, what is it we're gonna be doing with these signs? Are we doing something or, I don't wanna let it drift, so that'd be great, so.
Well, if you wanna look into signage?
No, I wanted, I wanted to have the conversation, and agreeing with you, you know, the conversation to have with our intern, state trooper, and get his viewpoint on this.
And whether we addition a sign.
If the signage will help us.
Oh, we're putting a stake in and giving a deadline and all that.
I guess I'd like to have a meeting with him, I'd like to, because I don't want it to drift, we definitely would like to have that meeting, get his point of view, what they've been done in there, for at least as reasonable.
So the meeting that you just suggested?
Yes, I think we should, we should, we should sit down, talk to him, and, and see what his ideas are, and what, what we can do to help our question, so I'm saying. Maybe there's something different than the last officer did.
He does have a different thinking process.
So we sit down, talk to him, and he can hear from you.
I think that's the first step, before we look into signage and all those things.
Will be available.
Reinforcement is different. Okay, uh, motion to, um, seven thirty?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.